Our Board of Trustees meeting to order. We've got everybody here. Roll call, please.
I would note for the record that Mayor Dodge and Trustee Malani are absent tonight. Trustee Leifblad is here as Mayor Protem. Trustee Lawrence.
Here.
Trustee Lawler.
Here.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas. Mayor Protem Leifblad.
Here.
The time is 7:03. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're asking for the approval of the July 21st, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Ms. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of July 21st, 2025.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad.
Aye.
We will proceed to non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment. And before I proceed, is there anybody here that is going to speak? Okay, then I'm not going to give the admonition. We will proceed to the next agenda item. Accounts payable July 21st, 2025 through August 4th, 2025. We are looking for approval.
Madam Chairman.
Yes. That's all right, you were speaking. Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable July 21st, 2025 through August 4th, 2025 in the amount of $3,152,846.36.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Chairwoman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I just had a question about one of the vendors. It was on page 820887, paid to Clark Hill for a harassment investigation.
Yes, Clark Hill is the law firm that is assisting the village in its appeal of the Sanchez matter.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad.
Aye.
We will proceed to the consent agenda. A, payroll for July 18th, 2025 approval. SCADA, S-C-A-D-A, Support Services Change Order Number One and Addendum A. C, Professional Engineering Services Master Service Agreements, 2025 to 2030. D, purchase of replacement police vehicle. E, private parking enforcement agreement with Pete's Fresh Market. F, Civic Plus Website Accessibility Solutions. G, special use permit for a restaurant, popcorns, gourmet popcorn and ice cream. And H, a resolution approving the local public agency agreement for federal participation to be entered in by the Village of Orland Park and the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, and the appropriation of village funds for the purpose of paying for the local agency share related to the land acquisition for the off-street multi-use asphalt path along the south side of 167th Street from Steeple Chase Parkway to the Orland Grasslands Trail at 104th Avenue under IDOT project number IMQE, parentheses, 343, state job number R-90-003-25,
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through H.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad. Public safety, an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Orland Park and the Village of Tinley Park to install and maintain radio equipment on Orland Park Water Tower Tank Number 10, which is located at 8800 West 159th, Orland Park, Illinois.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the intergovernment agreement between the Village of Orland Park and the Village of Tinley Park and move to authorize the village manager to execute this agreement upon approval of the board.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad.
Aye.
We proceed to developmental services, certificate of appropriateness for accessibility and other improvements to a landmark structure, John Humphrey House, 9830 West 144th Place.
Mayor Protem.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to approve the Plan Commission recommended action for case number 2025-0553, also known as the John Humphrey House Accessibility Improvements to a Landmark Structure at 9830 West 144th Place, and I move to approve a certificate of appropriateness.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? It looks like there's a presentation on it, right?
Only if you feel like you need it. It's in the back, but I can go over really quickly for you. So this is a property that we own. It's managed by Department of Wreckin Parks. It's the Humphrey House, and this request is to just make some improvements to the size of doors and other accessibility and out of the building, some routine maintenance, and to install a new air conditioning condenser. This certificate appropriateness is required for all structures in the old Orland Historic District, so this is just a quick summary of some of the things they're doing. There's nothing earth-shattering about this. It's just to get us up to code for a public building, replacing some walks, restriping some parking spaces, widening the door, and the installation of the air conditioning. It was a unanimous recommendation by the Plan Commission. There was some discussion about the parking space sizes, which actually wasn't relevant to the case, but it turns out it was moot because the spaces were appropriately sized. And that's it.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Madam Protem.
Trustee Healy.
I noticed that the doors are being widened. Is that for accessibility by disabled, I would imagine? But doesn't that take away from the original, I mean, original character, I mean, the original historic value of the house?
Yeah, the style of the door will remain the same. It is wider. I mean, we have some federal regulations and state regulations that we need for public places to make sure that they're accessible for people in wheelchairs, walkers, you know, if somebody needs, we need to get a stretcher in and out of there for some reason. So these are just pretty common improvements for public buildings.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad. Original Pancake House Inducement Agreement updated.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, Mayor, Madam Protem.
Trustee Katsinas. It's a mouthful.
I move to, I move to approve the revised Restaurant Backfill Incentive Inducement Agreement with Original Pancake House as outlined above, and authorize the village manager to execute the inducement agreement, subject to village attorney review.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion?
Madam Protem.
Trustee Katsinas.
Just want to say it's wonderful to have Original Pancake House stay in Orland. You know, they did lose their lease, is what we understood, and there were some great programs that were put into place to help backfill a lot of our restaurants. So it worked, it's working, and we keep not only a local great business, the family is also Orland Park residents, so we welcome them into the newer space, and I hope everyone goes to the old hula-hans, as it will now be the Original Pancake House. Thank you.
Very nice. Anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad.
Aye.
Passes Egg Harbor Inducement Agreement.
Is there a motion?
Mayor Protem.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to approve a sales tax sharing inducement agreement with Egg Harbor as outlined above, pending approval of all village planning, zoning, and building requirements, and authorize the village manager to execute the inducement agreement, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Madam Protem.
Trustee Katsinas.
Just want to say again, Egg Harbor, another great restaurant addition. I can't say something about one and not about the other. You know, a lot of people were excited when it was coming here, and I think the proof's in the pudding when you drive by. It's always real busy, and they have excellent food, so if you could support all of our local businesses, including Egg Harbor, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Trustee Lawler.
George, I just have a quick question for you. When we give these inducements, I know it's 25% of the build-out cost. Do we verify the build-out cost before we agree to all these?
Absolutely. So on a lot of these, on these inducement agreements, the value that's being put in there is based on what they're telling us, but no money is being reimbursed until they actually complete all of the paperwork, and we go through a verification process.
Okay, thank you.
So sometimes, they might say that they put in $225,000, but unless we get the paperwork to back that up, they won't get that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Because, Trustee Katsinas.
Just to be clear, George, all of our inducements are performance-based. They're not given money for nothing. They're given an inducement based on their performance. They don't perform, they don't get the inducement.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad.
Aye.
Proceed to Special Event Permit for St. Michael Parish Fall Festival, 1,000 people.
Mayor Protem.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to approve permitting St. Michael Parish to host a fall festival from September 25th, 28th, 2025, contingent upon meeting all the village's permitting requirements, payment of fees, and inspections.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Mayor Protem.
Trustee Katsinas.
I just had a question. I know they were going to have this, if I'm not, if I remember correctly, George, and part of the issue was the cost to do security measures. So I guess my question is, the security measures are being done and fencing around it and, you know, contacting Orland Park Police. Are you having any additional police officers there?
Exactly, everything you just said. So fencing's being put up, there will be Orland Park Police there, they will also supplement that with their own off-duty police, and so we've had meetings with them, and everything's been planned out, and we're, the village is very satisfied with the planning.
Okay, and just to be clear, there is an expense involved where they're reimbursing the village, just like what took place on the other Fourth of July event at the Andu property.
Correct.
It's the same.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, George.
And they have, and it's the same thing that they've done in the past. They've always reimbursed us for police services.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad. Engineering Downtown Orland Park Utility Relocation Construction Observation Engineering Services Contract Award Recommendation.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mayor Protem.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of a professional services agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Patrick Engineering Incorporated, DBARINA, of Chicago, Illinois, for downtown Orland Utility Relocation Construction Observation Services, for a total not to exceed the amount of $48,308, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts, subject to village attorney review.
Second. All right, is there any discussion, George? Is there anything that you needed to tell us?
No, this is, there's a village utility relocation element to the downtown Orland Park project. Originally, it was a much larger scope. Now, it's a much, it's a scaled back scope. We'll be saving quite a bit of money on that, between two and two and a half million dollars. But there will be a little bit that still needs to be done, and so that's what this contract does, is it, this contractor works for the village and helps us with our observation of it.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
Mayor Protem.
Trustee Katsinas.
Just had a couple of questions. I feel like my microphone is off here. This was not the lowest bidder, correct?
Aladdin, can you help us out here?
Yeah, correct. The lowest bidder, go ahead, ask your question.
Okay, the question I have, all of these people that bid, the engineering firms, we just approved our preferred list, right? But yet, in the body of the legislative text, there were no complete proposals received during the original solicitation period. I guess my concern is if we go to some sort of fixed fee, you know, the cost gets outrageous because of work orders, you know? So, you know, if they're, you know, if they're bidding on the job and this is the dollar amount, you know, that should be the dollar amount. I know things come up, but I know we've gotten into, into difficulty, particularly with engineering in the past, where we thought it was one price and then it's another price. So I guess, how are we fixing that issue?
Yep.
You know, and how does it make sense to go to this vendor versus the others if they're all preferred and perhaps they're not filling out our, you know, RFPs correctly? It's like, it's not making sense to me.
So the approval of this contract is a not-to-exceed, and it's really more of an hourly-based contract. As I'd mentioned, originally, this was going to include a much bigger scope. It's the, it's the utilities that run through Crescent Park. So for all intents and purposes, those utilities will stay there. One of them has to just be kind of realigned, so this was the maximum amount based on the entire project, the larger scope project. Now that this is being reduced, it, again, it's based on hourly, we won't even come close to hitting that, but it still gives the flexibility just in case unknown things come up.
Okay, I know things change, but I think in the future, if these are our preferred vendors, you know, hopefully they would have an idea of scope of work going forward, maybe not in this particular case, but just to make sure that, you know, we don't get inundated with change orders that are not to exceed and that's, and if things come up, we have to draw the line in the sand somewhere.
Understood.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment. I noticed that in the deliverables section, there are weekly reports consisting of daily field summaries and documentation of required testing performed, so that leads me to believe that they would be presenting that documentation prior to actually engaging in the testing or whatever they were going to do. Is that correct?
Correct. So this is, this is a little more, a little different than a Phase One or a Phase Two Design Engineering. This is Observation Services. So basically, they're, they're the eyes and ears of the engineering department while this is happening. So, yeah, they're really just, they're monitoring on our behalf, making sure that it's being done right.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad.
Aye.
Proceed to Recreation in Parks 2026 Spring Program List.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mayor Protem, Madam Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the Winter-Spring 2026 Wreckin Parks and Veterans Commission Programs and Events, consistent with the list in Legistar, item 2025-0267, reducing the 2026 cost to participate in the Hometown Heroes Banner Program from $125 to $75. To allow hometown hero banners in good condition to be reused at a cost of $25, the introduction of a new drop-in pickleball program at the Franklin Lobe Center, beginning November 2025, and to authorize payments to the contractual vendor and instructor at the time of invoicing, and authorize the village manager to execute all agreements with contractual vendors and instructors listed in the Winter-Spring 2026 Program Guide, subject to village attorney review.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad.
Aye.
Proceed to Centennial Park West Concert Series Vantage Production Group, Contract Addendum B and Change Order Number Three.
Is there a motion? Madam Chair. Trustee Lawrence.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of Change Order Number Three and Addendum B to the original contract dated March 18th, 2024, with Soundworks Doing Business as Vantage Productions Group of LaMotte, Illinois, for the rental of lifts in support of light and sound rigging for the August 8 and 30, 2025 Centennial Park West Concert, as outlined in Proposals dated July 29, 2025, to increase the contract amount by $137,800 by $600 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $1,38400. And to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts, subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders related to this contract within the authorized amount.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leifblad. Indestructo, Change Order Number Two and Addendum B.
Madam Chair. Trustee Lawrence.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of Change Order Number Two and of Change Order Number 2 and Addendum B with Indestructo Rental Company Incorporated of Displanes, Illinois, for the rental of tent weights, additional tents, lights, tables, and chairs for the 2025 Taste of Orland Park as outlined in the proposal dated July 29, 2025, to increase the total not-to-exceed contract amount of $22,572.20 by $11,003.80 for a new total not-to-exceed contract amount of $33,576.
Second.
Sorry. To authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders related to this contract within the authorized amount.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Well, we'll take trustee Lawler as the second, I guess.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leefleb.
Aye.
Special Event Permit, Dean's Greens Saturday Markets.
Mayor Protem.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to approve permitting Dean's Greens to host up to four Saturday markets at Bully Farm beginning from Saturday, August 9th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., contingent upon meeting all the village permitting requirements, payment of fees, and inspections, and authorize the village managed, the village manager to execute all related contract leases subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Okay, that's trustee Katsinas. Yeah, she could, she was first. Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leefleb.
Aye.
We will proceed to Number 20, Non-Scheduled Citizens and Visitors for Public Comment on Items Relevant to Village Business.
I see somebody raised their hands. Please come, you'll want to come to the microphone and tell us your name.
You want me to read the admonition? Okay. Okay, before we proceed, ma'am, I have to read an admonition for public comment.
For all the speakers, yes.
Okay. Each individual wishing to address the village board will be allocated a maximum of three minutes. Before speaking, each person must clearly state their name for the record. We expect all speakers to conduct themselves in a respectful and orderly manner. Personal attacks on current or former employees or elected officials will not be permitted. On matters of, I'm sorry, on advice of attorneys, there will be no discussion of pending court cases. Please note that the trustees will not engage in debate during public comment. While the board generally does not respond to public remarks, the mayor or a trustee may choose to do so if deemed appropriate. We appreciate your cooperation and look forward to hearing from those who wish to speak.
Hello, please, please say your name.
King.
And speak into the microphone so we can make sure to hear you.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, I'm not familiar with you. I spoke to Mayor Dodge. You're the mayor of, what?
I, when Mayor Dodge is, was unable to attend in the meeting tonight, and so I am here in his place only for tonight.
Oh, okay. Okay, I was finna say, y'all switch fast.
What is your name?
I'm King.
Can you?
Um, ma'am.
Spell your name, ma'am. Spell it out, please.
K-I-N-G.
Oh, King, K-I-N-G.
K-I-N-G.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I'm here, because Mayor, Mayor Dodge, he knows about this. But I was attacked in KNG stores in Orland Park, Illinois. Now, I spoke to Mayor Dodge, and he said that he was going to talk with KNG and get back with me within a week. I haven't heard from him in two weeks. I don't know why. But however, this happened in Orland Park in KNG stores. Now, I don't know if somebody else doesn't think this is serious, because I think it's very serious. When they were having the officials that was being elected, I was one of the people that voted. And I met a whole lot of officials, and they were speaking with me, and they said, well, you know, we're trying to make Orland Park more inclusive. You know, it's not as inclusive as we like. I can't remember this particular man named that was out there that spoke with us for a long time when we was in the polling line. But I have his card, and he said, I promise you, we're making Orland Park more inclusive. We want to make it so that everybody fits in. And I kept his card, and he gave me his card, and he gave me his name. He said, I promise you, we're doing that. Now, I haven't experienced that. I mean, I don't know, but I haven't. And when this attack happened to me, I, I don't know, you know? Mayor Dodge, I talked to him like twice, you know, on the phone. And he said, yes, I'm going to get right to it because it happened in Orland Park. And I can't see why something like this would happen in Orland Square Mall. I didn't hear from him. And I'm like, you know, this is not okay with me. You know, it's not, it's, this is not okay with me. I wasn't the wealthiest person before this happened to me, but this just added on to the illness I was already having. And, I mean, I haven't heard from him. I, I don't know if he contacted KNG. I don't know what happened. But that man, and I have to get his card, who, who, when we was in the polling line voting, who told me, he said, I promise you, we're out here speaking with you guys because we're making promises that we're going to keep. And I would just like to call him and tell him I haven't experienced that. I mean, I've been through a slew of things. I came to Orland Park because I was purchasing a property, because I had been in a fire. I was in a fire. So I was, I was, I was purchasing a property in Orland Park. Now, when I got ready to buy the property, the roof was no good. So I couldn't, I couldn't purchase the property because the roof was no good. So it, it set me back. Listen, I have spent thousands upon thousands of dollars trying to, like, reorganize some things after a fire. I haven't, like, received no type of assistance, no type of help, no type of anything. I've been attacked. When I came out here, I had just lost my mother. I've been attacked in Orland Park, in the, in the public KNG store. I didn't even know this guy.
Okay.
I never saw him a day of my life.
Ms. King, I want to thank you so much for talking to us. I see that you have some photographs. Are those for us to, to, to give to us, or just?
Yeah, do you know what?
Why don't you, why don't you?
Like, these are not, yeah, these are the ones, yes.
Ms. Ms. King, I would ask you to give the information to George Cuzwara as well. Oh, oh, there he is, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And also, if you have an email address, maybe, or contact information, provide that as well, so that, so that we can have the opportunity to get back to you and maybe ask you other questions as well. I imagine that the, the police were called when you were attacked?
Absolutely, absolutely. They, they were called on my part. And because when I went to the hospital, it had to be mandated reported anyway, because they thought I was in some type of domestic dispute, which I wasn't. But it had to be mandated because they said it was an assault. And I didn't even know that. But the, when I was in the polling line, the guys that I met and shook hands with, and they told me that, you know, they were doing a lot of different things in Orland Park now, you know, and they were making it way more inclusive and all of those sorts of things. That guy I met, we talked for a while, and he explained some things to me, which I said, I have his card, so I can find out what his name was, because they, it was a lot of people talking to us when we was in the polling line, convincing us to vote for them. So I, I just, I want to tell him. I have not found the inclusiveness.
Well, Ms. King, I want to thank you so much for making us aware of that. And please give your contact information to the, to Ted, who, who you gave the, your photographs to, and we'll, we will have somebody come, get back to you, okay?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Joanna M.L. Leefleb.
Yes, I'm a trustee, but today, for today, I'm just a temporary mayor. So that's all, yeah.
Okay, okay, well, thank you, thank you very much, ma'am.
Sure, thank you.
Will proceed to Board Comments.
Is there anyone else who wants to? Oh, trustee Katsinas.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to thank everyone who participated and worked the Taste of Orland, particularly our Public Works, our Rec. Department, the volunteers from Azda were out there, and of course, our police officers, and just two people who really were there all the time and made it happen. Chief Eric Rossi, thank you. And thank you very much, Ray Patoni, for everything you did. You were there the whole time, as was your staff. I think a fun time was had by all. And thank you for putting it together. And thank you, chief, for keeping us all safe. Thanks for people that came, to both our visitors and people that live here in the Village of Orland. The entertainment was out of the park. You outdid yourself, Ray. They were outstanding, so thank you for that. I also want to remind you, tomorrow night is Night Out Against Crime. It will be held, same place where the Taste of Orland was, right in the Village Green. They'll have a lot of really cool exhibits for kids, talk about crime, give some demonstrations with some of the dogs. And I think Joey's is going to be there, chief, correct? The food truck, Joey's will be there as well, so you can come and have a hot dog for dinner from Joey's, which is really good. Also, remind people, this Sunday is our concert with Lynyrd Skynyrd and Molly Hatchet. You still can get tickets online, correct, Ray? The gates open at 5:00, and that will be held at Centennial Park West. And hope to see you there. Thank you.
Okay, I could just, I'm going to go to trustee Healy.
I would like to say that thank you to the staff for putting on such a wonderful Taste of Orland. And that's my, my only comment for tonight, so that's good news.
Trustee Lawler.
Yeah, I want to echo Cindy's comments. Chief Rossi, Ray, and Parks and Rec, everybody who was out there. You guys did an absolutely fantastic job. I mean, we got to thank Mother Nature, too, for three beautiful days of weather. Probably the best weather Orland Park's ever had for this event. But anyways, I just want to say thank you. You guys did a wonderful job. I think everybody had fun. And I believe we didn't have any issues, which is always a great thing. So thanks again.
Trustee Lawrence.
So ditto for all the thank yous. And in addition, I'd like to remind everyone, especially our residents, that there were others involved in making this happen. So we had a lot of sponsors, and they contributed greatly to making it possible for our residents to come and get entrance for free, and our neighbors and neighboring towns to get in for free. So Northwestern Medicine, Astound, who's putting in fiber for internet service around town, Christopher Burke Engineering, Comcast, ComEd, Dave and Buster's, Girl Scouts of Greater Chicago and Northwest Indiana, M.E. Simpson Company Incorporated, People Bank, Polish and Slavic Federal Credit Union, Power Home Remodeling, Renewal by Anderson, Silver Lake Country Club, Spaceco, The V3 Companies, and Waste Management. These companies help us do what Ray and, and the police officers and, and our publics worked, all executed. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. I, I don't think we can say thank you enough, actually, to our, I mean, just the way it was laid out, everything, you know, from our sponsors to our, to the staff, to the police department. It was a wonderful event. It felt safe. It felt, somebody mentioned that it just had a really wonderful vibe, and I think that's a really great way to put it. It just felt really good, just to be there. So thank you.
Will proceed to adjournment.
Mayor Protem.
Motion. Trustee Katsinas.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leefleb.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:42. Wow.